I call this meeting to order. For the Board of Trustees of the Town of Buena Vista. May I have roll call, please?
Mayor Lacy.
Here.
Mr. Payne.
Here.
Mr. Lucrezzi.
Here.
Mr. Nyberg.
Here.
Mr. Rowe. Mr. Swisher.
Here.
Mr. Bogey.
Yep.
Thank you all. Will you please rise and join me for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, I'd like to make a short announcement. I was made aware of. Say, I'm not going to talk circumstance, but happening by Special Project Manager Joel Benson. A longtime resident. Or residents of the Valley, JP County. The Grendel family, I'm sure. You've heard some names. I've heard the name before. Made a contribution to the town, a very generous contribution to the town. They signed over water rights from Cottonwood Creek to the town.
Wow.
And principle, it's a principle thing. It may not amount to anything, but it's a principle. Very generous. And I wanted to point out Mary Ann and the Grendel family for that. We really appreciate that.
Great.
Wow. First is the agenda. Changes, deletions to the. I'm sorry, I had to throw that out, Philip. We're going to cut some off. We're at 8:30 coming up. To the agenda. Hearing, or if anybody would like, a motion to approve the agenda as presented. I'm not moved. I'll take Nyberg.
Second.
Oh, you. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next item is consent agenda. Any questions or comments on the consent agenda? I want to recognize, I believe it's Michael Rose. Rose Knower to the Chaffee County Multi Jurisdictional Housing Authority. We appreciate. His.
I guess Mika.
Mika.
Oh, it is.
Oh, yeah, Mika.
Thank you.
Yep.
I thought spelling, I'm going, boy, that does not make sense. I thought it was a typo. Thank you all very much for pointing that out. We appreciate that effort. Any other questions or comments? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
A second.
There we go. Swisher, crazy, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you all very much. Next item on the agenda is public comment. Philip, I will remind everyone that if you are attending during Zoom, you can. Raise your hand in the chat box. If you are on by phone, you may press star nine. And we will recognize you and ask you to speak.
All right, we have a group raising their hands.
And we'll have to, I'm sorry, Philip, I'm going to have to have you read a name.
Yeah, you can't make it from here. Let me get them all moved over.
There you go.
This is a group from the Boy Scouts.
All right, Cam, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. My name is Cam Torrens. I work. With the Boy Scouts. I'm expecting Skell Master Heinitz and his son to. Join us quickly and I'll turn it over to Matthew to introduce himself.
All right, we have kept coming in. Hopefully here in a second.
Hello, my name is Josh Torren. I'm in Troop 67. And I'm learning about B V for the citizenship. Ship in the. Community merit badge. Thank you for letting me be here.
Thank you, Josh.
My name is Matthew Torrens and I'm in Troop 67. And. I'm here. With Joshua as the same thing. Thank you for letting me join here.
Can you hear us? Can you hear us, Cam?
Yes, we got blanked out there for a while. Were you able to hear the introductions?
We heard, yes, we heard Matthew and Joshua.
Cap, if you're on, would you like to introduce yourself?
There's Devin.
It looks like that's it for tonight.
Thank you very much, Cam. And we always welcome your group to attend anytime.
Thank you, we appreciate it.
Thank you. And Paula, you noted that Devin is with us now? Thank you.
Yeah, sorry, I had computer issues.
You're all good. No worries.
He kind of bearded there.
Next item is staff reports. Town Administrator.
All right, let me screen up. All right, good evening, everyone. My report is on page seventeen of the packet. And you'll see several things are highlighted. I will go through briefly, hit a few points here, and then if you have any questions, I'll take them. As usual, so trying to keep a list of key, key things, key dates happening, coming up. As you'll see quite a bit being loaded up for the first part of next year. We are looking at, first thing there is we've. We've moved the intergovernmental meeting. They'll be hosted by the county probably till the end of January. And then the BV School Board reached out and they would, they've invited town representatives to come. Participate kind of in a work session format with the school board. This is something we do at least once a year. Last time, myself, Chief Morgan and Megan were there to talk about various things that are going on with the SRO program. Town projects, things like that. So. That kind of, that kind of update, I think, is, is what they're looking for. And definitely one or two trustees would love to have participation. So. Reach out to me, let me know, or we can talk about it in trustee staff interaction, but that'll be January tenth. We're looking at starting up with several work sessions. We've talked about the one around water that will take place in February. We're also scheduling the architectural design guidelines, a follow-up one year later kind of discussion with HPC. On how the guidelines are going and then if there's any. I guess, direction, discussion about changing code or those types of things. Then we're looking at. Our regular strategic planning session, but we're also contemplating, how do we, how do we start talking about? The time and the appropriate take with updating the comprehensive plan, which can be a pretty significant undertaking. But maybe doesn't have to be. So we might combine that into with our strategic planning and. Kind of tackle all that together, not the whole comprehensive plan, but discuss the approach we want to take with that effort. So. We're looking at possibly sometime in March. We would love to do that with the current board. It helps establish priorities and directions for the next budget cycle. And helps get things. In good order for when the next board takes their seats in April. So maybe trustee staff, we can start talking about dates, preferences for that. Real quick, you may have seen it, may not, but the bus staying is now coming through town, which has been kind of cool to see from Town Hall. And people have figured it out very quickly. So just imagine how effective it might be once they actually get more information out there. But. Right now it is coming through town. It's turning. Off of the highway onto Arkansas Street and there wraps around Railroad. Railroad Street back towards Main Street and they're stopping in the railroad parking lot. And so anyway, it's good to see. I think that's a benefit to our town, benefit to residents. I think it's a better location in general. We would have to clearly. Figure out a good stop during the summertime when there's not as much room in the railroad parking lot. And we'd be interested in putting up signage or having bus stay and put, put up signage, things like that. Overall, I think it's a much better location.
You know, if it's also stopping in Johnson Village, like.
Is not.
It's not.
Is not, no. At least as of this week, they've changed their route quite a bit, but. No stop in JV right now. Let's see here. Oh, so. We've, we've met as administrators and with the Chaffee Housing Authority to start talking about. Funding for housing in general and then funding for the housing authority and how that can be structured for that entity. To continue to be more effective and do more throughout the county. And that was always kind of the discussion. Leading up to the creation of the Housing Authority was, at some point, they would need some dedicated funding source. It wasn't just from the general funds of the participating entities. So. We had a kickoff discussion. To try to establish, hey, is this something that? We want to, you know, attempt to look at in 2022 and who would lead that and at what time do we want to get the electeds? Involved to start talking about preferences for that. So. Definitely seems like consensus, at least that it's, it's the right time to talk about it. So we're going to meet again in December to outline a little bit more about what the funding needs of the Housing Authority are. And, and a little bit longer term. And then come back to you all to start talking about. Do we want to collaborate countywide on a potential ballot question? In November, 2022. So look forward to that discussion. We also kicked off the discussion with Sangre de Cristo about the franchise agreement, which come due. End of April next year, after 25 years. So it's a long-term agreement. Where we've been waiting for this one, eager to dig into it. The leadership from the Sangre side. Very, very willing and ready to talk about it as well. So I just included a few high-level topics that we're going to be focusing on. In that agreement. So if there's other thoughts about it, we'll capture that.
Okay, I have a question about it. One time when I was signing checks, when Duff wasn't available, I hit the Sangre de Cristo checks and there were like. Thirty different accounts for Sangre de Cristo. And it was like every little crosswalk had its own bill. And each of those bills was within a maintenance fee attached to it of about $30. It just seemed like, it seemed excessive to me. And I was wondering, and at late. It may be worth $30 each to, for you guys to separate it out, but. You know, it just seemed like an awful lot of money going to. And then straight across.
Each of, each of the meters is an account. And so every time we have a meter throughout town. That's an account. So I don't know if they'll even waive it because they do maintain them. But we could ask, if we must do.
It is, you'll see in there, the service level agreement for streetlights, the billing for all of that is a jumbled mess, to put it kindly. There's different types of billings, different rates, all of that. So the desire would be to simplify that. The concept of a, a maintenance fee is. And also kind of the built-in of the rate structure is basically prepaying for replacement. Capital cost of that light once it's end of life. Well, you can see we're already, we've already entered into a project where we, the town is bringing money to the table to replace old lights. So. And the problem is the current franchise agreement is very, very vague around all of that. So that is a big point that we want to clarify.
Yeah, because those fees are probably, they're close to a thousand a month, I would say.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Yep.
Good point.
Thank you. All right, rodeo grounds, master planning. Wow, what a great time to have mybv.com come online. We've utilized that. To get the survey out and we've had over 250 responses with written feedback. On that specific project at the rodeo ground. So. That's been very, very effective. We're excited. It's, we're actually, it's a lot of data to handle, which, which is a good thing, but. Excellent to see that. So the NES team will be back in town January 20th to hold a public open house here at the community center. And they'll be sharing kind of the. Collective input they've received and also present some alternatives, some ideas. What that looks like at the rodeo grounds in Chicago Ranch areas. Police station. We had now published an RFP to try to find a construction manager to join the team during the architectural design phase that we're in right now. Hope to have that potentially in December. And Main Street Decorative Lights, you've seen that work underway. And Arizona Trail and Bridge, we did actually see some good progress this past week. The full environmental assessment back with CDOT. And Olson Engineering is wrapping up the scour report, put a little definition there on what scour is. The bridge. And hope to get that to CDOT. So kind of what we're hoping to get wrapped up by the end of the year. So at that, I'll take a breath. Any questions?
Any questions for Philip? Thank you, Philip. Next, Town Treasurer.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. My report is on page twenty of the packet. And we did receive our sales tax September. And. One of the issues is. That I dust off the old memo and use it over again, so I don't have to recreate the wheel all the time. So. The total sales tax for September is in fact a 506-882. The 538 mentioned above the grid, that's last, last month's sales tax number. I missed updating that. So. It happens. We have our sales tax, the, the. The 2020 receipts. We also have the year-to-date surplus. And it broken down between local and remote and percent growth at the bottom of each of those grids. And I have listed. The town expenditures and the checks over $2,000. And you are going to be hearing from me a lot more tonight. So that's it. Yeah, I'll take questions if you want.
Yes, go ahead, Dave.
In the expenditures over $2,000, I assume the. Check to Robert Bosberg for the Rough Patch Complex is for the Wildland Fire Program. That gets re-some thing.
Yes.
Just didn't see that one before. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Any other questions for Michelle? Great, we will be hearing more from you later.
Yes.
Planning Director.
I'll be planning director this evening. Joseph is on vacation. So. You know, a few highlights. One, you will see the progression of some of the housing-related topics that are making their way through planning and zoning. So kind of a heads up to see what's coming. Some of it will be to sooner than later. So that's exciting. Zone district changes, things like that. The other. Aspect, I'm just going to go ahead and clarify that you'll see. Site plans pending. Looks like all that flows together. Just going to use it as an example. Those are actually two different items, the farm apartments and then the. 326 East Arkansas, two, two different site plans pending. So just wanted to highlight that. And then finally, Joseph's been. A huge help getting RFPs created and published. That's something that takes quite a bit of time, but you'll see, right now we have three RFPs published, one for the. Developer for the Carbon Street Lots, one for the code audit that we got the grant for from DOLA. Related to housing and then the construction manager for the police station project. So. Good stuff out there. But that'll. Try and take any questions for the planning.
Questions for.
Do you know, that 326 East Arkansas, is that. That must be in the block that has that. Old motel in it, but the motel faces the tunnel road.
Correct. It faces Colorado. So. This lot, this particular lot is behind it west of the old motel. On Arkansas Street.
Just for my interest, can you describe it? The.
No.
No.
Because I haven't. I think it's, I think the concept being it's stacked. Shipping containers. But I have not seen a, a. A front, a design front of it.
There's a house now that's been built like out on 330, I think. That's made from containers. It looks pretty cool.
Yeah. That is an example, yeah.
Is that a temporary thing? Or is that, that's to be there for, okay, so gotcha.
It, it would be something that would get a building permit and there, I would imagine they're building it to be there as a. Permanent, just as much as any stick-built structure. Yeah.
Thank you.
And I just noticed, looking at the year-to-date numbers, I looked back to eighteen, nineteen and. Basically the drop in 2020, which was kind of expected, but it's right back online for what we were doing in eighteen and nineteen.
In terms of dwelling units and.
Oh, yes, fifty-three year-to-date. I think it was fifty-four one year and fifty-two or fifty the year before that. It was like, so, and slowed down a bit. And slowed down a bit. Anything else for Philip? Public Works. Sir Sean.
Hey, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, trustees. Public Works Staff Report, looks like it's page twenty-five in the packet. Anyways, we'll, we'll start out with water production as always. So. Looking pretty good still. We're in a pretty. Low unaccounted. Time for this year in 2021. We had some struggles early on this year, but right now things still, things are looking really good. The actual unaccounted, when we just compare the consumptive meter billing and use, water use to the master meters, eleven percent. The, the total. For October includes some of the known water loss and some of the known construction and flushing uses. So we, we're looking at about eight percent with some of that. So. Pretty lucky, but also we're working to get to those numbers. And so hopefully we can hang on to that. Percentage for a while. Wanted to share with you guys a fairly. I guess intimate kind of perspective view on the water treatment plant expansion project. So. A little bit more high-level than I usually put in, in my report, but I just want to get you guys some important updates and some information. And really just kind of let you know that, you know, we're, we're looking at trying to make this easier on our community and. Really, we just wanted to kind of see what financial opportunities might become a little bit more. Concrete for us to, to share with you. So it could help us with our path and, and our design of our project and. And obviously, you know, the costs associated to it. So. There's a few components to it. So, yeah, you guys are, you guys are all, we're all up to speed on everything for the most part. I know. You have a lot that you're, that you're covering. So I'll just kind of break it back down into some of the components for more of a refresher. So. The SRA project component was in the preliminary design report that GBA produced and. We've got most of the edits kind of. The kinks wrapped out and we're ready to send that to CDPE for, for their review. Now, even though we don't have the project scope defined, we have the needs of our community defined and we have enough information in there that will give us. Once it's reviewed, information on, on how we qualify in regards to the state revolving fund loan program. And so in that. Section, I have some information in regards to some of the loans that are available and if. If you have any questions on that, we can, we can talk in more detail to that and. In that section too, I want to just kind of give you guys an update of where we're at in this state revolving loan program process. So. We, we did receive a $10,000 grant for, for planning and that's great. And that's a really strong indicator that we, we should qualify for. You know, a, a strong loan with them. Won't know yet, but it's usually a strong indicator. And anyway, the start on the. On the chart kind of highlights where we're at right now in that process. And anyway, things are going pretty good. One of the things that I really wanted to share with you was some additional funding assistance efforts. Mostly with CWCB, so the Colorado Water Conservation Board. Staff along with. Our consulting engineers, we met with the representative from CWCB and. It was very refreshing to hear that this is, there's a portion of our project that is very much aligned with what. CWCB offers grant funding assistance to. So the gallery expansion portion. And possibly even the diversion structure for the surface water component, if we moved in that direction. But the big one is, is getting the, the grant application. Propagated and filled out and sent to those guys for, for their review. But yeah, we're, we're really excited and it was a very refreshing meeting with their team. With our team and their representative to kind of get some, some. Information, perspective on, on how to approach that and if they were interested in. Hearing more about what we did, what we were doing, and they were. So it's a really interesting project. And so that funding would be associated to the raw water components of the. Water planning expansion project. So if we were to move forward with the gallery expansion, that's probably the best. Approach for that funding source, which, which is great, which is incredible. You know, for the most part, you know, we're, we're really not trying to, to move in any direction until we see exactly what. What things. Cost and, and, and one way to find that out is, is moving into thirty percent design. And I, and I think that's one thing that I really feel is important for us to do. So we have some real, real-world numbers on, on what it's going to cost to build some of this. Engineering numbers provide us a pretty good idea of what these costs, but. Think we, we all know that things can change and these are really interesting times that we're in. But. You know, hang in there. I think we'll have a little bit more information for you, for you all in, in the coming. Board meetings to, to kind of lay down the, the path and, and some of the recommendations from staff. board meetings to, to kind of lay down the, the path and, and some of the recommendations from staff. What I, what I will say is, you know, JBA did an amazing job presenting to the Board of Trustees as well as the Water Advisory Board, and I put in the what-to-do bullet point section, a little bit of the information that we captured from the Water Advisory Board, and that's also captured in their minutes, and I tend to think that that was a very good thorough evaluation on what JBA presentation to, to the Water Advisory Board, and I just wanted to share that with you, and I do think that that also offers us a, a pretty good direction and, and, and effort to, to apply for the CWCB grant for, for the gallery expansion portion of the project. Anyways, a lot of information there, kind of jumped all over the place, but I'll get to the rest of it. The engineering projects banging away at the standards and specs, water section is complete, so we'll be looking to present that to, to this board in, in the coming trustee meetings as well. Street Department's pretty much helping with kind of manage some of the, the construction projects that we have going on, helping to make sure that some of the efforts that some of the subcontractors are working on in town are, are doing safely, and we're, we're involved in that in, in, in more of a traffic control and traffic control. Parks, bugging away, they're working on a few things here and there, mostly having to water a lot of trees and grass this time of year. It's just so dry this year, so we're doing a little bit of watering this last couple of weeks to, to give the trees a little bit of a boost, and, and some of the grass areas mostly in some of our recreational fields. Anyways, we have a, a couple of things that I didn't put in here. Couple of sensitive infrastructure projects that are, that are going on right now, and you might have seen one yesterday, and you might have seen the other one in South Main, so we do have some contractors working on getting ready to do a water tap on West Main Street, pretty tough location. We have a traffic control plan, and we have a contractor ready to go, and we're lining him up with our water department to make sure that we have everybody in place and everything kind of dialed in really good before we do that. That's likely to have a, a pretty big impact next Monday and Tuesday, so some full lane closures with some detours. Bus routes affected, you know, a lot of travel affected as well. And also, we have a project going on down in South Main, so some directional boring efforts for dry utilities, communication lines that are being installed down there is pretty interesting method of doing things. Kind of surprised how technology advancements have allowed for Boring to, to actually have success in Univista. There was a time where the rocks just didn't allow it. But anyways, that should be wrapped up, I believe, tomorrow, so that one will be done, and we really just trying to make sure that we don't have any vulnerabilities. Working on and over water mains, we, we try to limit that to maybe one area at a time, and our, our team has done a really good job, and the contractors involved have done a, done a pretty good job too as well. Anyways, that's what I got.
Any questions for Sean? Thank you, Sean.
Thank you.
Next is Jack, Airport Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, trustees. I'll try to keep this short. On the staff side, Chandra, our operations specialist, just completed the American Association Airport Executive Certified Members. This is a pretty big deal. It's sort of, it's a one-week course that teaches sort of lays out everything you want to know about an airport and some you don't, but it gives a great understanding, and most of the folks that take these courses are the, you know, at bigger airports and, and bigger operations, so it's a big feather in her cap that she was able to complete this. She passes with great marks and you know, and it's going to give her a real leg up on understanding airport operations. On staffing-wise, during the Thanksgiving holidays, we'll go to minimum staffing just to keep people so they can enjoy the holidays as much as they can. We'll be on call-out on the day of Thanksgiving, so if somebody comes in, we'll just come in and help them out if, as needed. Operation-wise, Augusta Boeing finished up their testing towards the end of October. We've invoiced them, so we've had testing this year, early January, February, and then two testings during the fall, so we've, this year, testing come around about $73,000. I say unofficial on this just because I didn't add the nick, you know, the pennies and dollars, but $73,000 for this year in testing. Airport business-wise, the projects that we're going to see here in 2022 and 2023, the scope of work has been approved by the FAA. We have to do an independent fee study. This is an FAA requirement when we get money from them, and we are in the process of doing that now. We've hired a subcontractor to do that. I've consulted with the Air Advisory Board on this, and they all agree that this is probably the best course of action, just because the engineering on airports is a bit different than highways and normal construction engineering we see around town. There's, there's a lot of different things in here that I don't understand and a lot of other folks, but so we just hire a professional to review the, the contract. Vehicle-wise, not too bad. We just have some minor maintenance. And again, the CDOT, we finished up here early in middle of fall, the, the Airport Capital Improvement Plan that'll extend from 22, 2022 to 2028, and you can see that on the exhibit on page 30, and then the sort of a spreadsheet on page 31 sort of outlines a lot of the numbers that we're projecting out. Operation-wise, won't go and read all the details, but it looks like, you know, we're pretty much up in 2021 than we were in 2020, all the way positive signs. We're doing pretty, pretty, pretty well. And just FYI, we just received probably our last load of Jet A. We just received it last week, so we have another load of Jet A, so that's pretty good that we've gone through a lot of fuel. Finally, if no other questions, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
Thanks.
Thank you, Jack.
Happy Thanksgiving.
And to you also. Any questions for Jack? Comments? Thank you very much, Jack.
You bet.
Next item is business items. Item A, a discussion regarding extending the emergency declaration into 2022 and structure for trustee meetings.
Yeah, so, quick discussion tonight, get some direction from the board of how you want to handle a couple of topics, so first of all, back in June-ish, mid, mid-year, the board extended the disaster, local disaster emergency declaration by resolution 30 to the end of this year. At the time, we were pretty hopeful that COVID would be wrapping up and we'd be kind of out of the woods with that. Unfortunately, as you all are aware, that has not been the case, and especially in our county, the numbers are up quite a bit, which is impacting a lot of functions, including our schools, and we've had some, some, some town operations that we've had to get creative with because of infection and, and county-wide, it's just not looking great right now. So, we, the county leadership roundtable met last week, and we had the opportunity to hear from the hospital and the EMS teams directly, and yeah, they're, they're pretty worn right now. They're dealing with a lot of cases in our hospital. Unlike, for most of this pandemic, our local hospital, I think, is being stretched more so than they have before, so. You know, local numbers don't look great, so that's, that's kind of prompting, you know, seeking direction from the board. One, is there a desire to extend this emergency declaration into 2022? And again, just to hit a few highlights of that, what that does is it basically gives the board authority to meet remotely when necessary, and for us to, to conduct normal business operations through the board utilizing remote access. We haven't been required to prove that we have a local emergency declaration yet when it comes to receiving funding from the state and the feds, but that could always be a factor. Really, we haven't seen any downside to having that, that declaration in place, so. Yeah, kind of offer that up. And then, in combination of that, I'd love to hear some discussion about what you would like to do with your actual meetings over the next few months. You've probably seen the announcement from the county commissioners that they're going to go to more of a remote setup for a while, where I think they're still meeting in, in person with some key staff, kind of like what tonight looks like with the public participating on Zoom, which we did for a long time and throughout 2020 and into this year. Yeah, so that has its pros and cons. I think it's been great having at least the board together in person. I think that that's been very beneficial. Key staff helps as well, but when you start opening up, you know, it, you can get nobody, or you can get a house full, and, and then it kind of creates an interesting dynamic with spacing and everything, so I will turn it over to all the discuss, trustees.
I'd like to just comment that I too enjoy our in-person meetings. I feel like it's good for our relationship with one another, because we can, you know, I can ask you how your wife is, or you know, what are you doing for Thanksgiving, and it's just, I, I think it builds rapport among ourselves. I feel bad for that audience sometimes when they're out there, because they really are close together, and they look uncomfortable in their, in the masks and everything. So I, I think in general, I'd be in favor of us meeting in person for as much as we can, but then, and if anybody's not comfortable with that, then they can go on Zoom. But I think the public comment is better on Zoom right now.
Okay, thank you, Libby. Anybody else? Comments?
I agree with Trustee Faye completely.
I do too.
Yep.
Thinking that we should close the doors and just have, have, have key staff and trustees in the meeting, but I think allowing people in if they feel the need to be here is probably not a bad idea. Just encouraged to be on Zoom, given the situation. So, I'm not sure.
Thank you, Dave.
I don't have strong feelings either way, but allowing them, then if they feel the need to be here, it seems appropriate.
Norm, and you, you're in agreement there?
Yeah.
And, and, go ahead.
I agree with Trustee Faye.
Cindy?
I agree too, and I when we look around this room, how many people have I been in contact today that's different than the number of people that you've been in contact with? And we do need to protect each other, and I am definitely in favor of the public meeting on Zoom right now instead of packing them back there and who all has been exposed and whatever, and that's why I did not, that's why I attended on Zoom last time, is because I had been exposed and I waited until I got my test results and all that, so I didn't come down here and make y'all sick, yeah. So, I think it is smart to just have us meet in person and.
I totally agree. It adds a different dimension to the meetings. When, obviously, when you're in a screen, you're in a screen. It's, and I think it's obvious in how it's changed the way we interact at this point. So, first thing we need, uh, do you want to call it? I'm sorry, Devin, go ahead. I keep forgetting, Devin.
Yeah, I know, that's the downfall, I guess, of a Zoom interaction on the board, so which kind of puts it in perspective. You know, I've been on, on Zoom the last few meetings, so it's been really awesome for me to have this opportunity to visit with my family and my mom and my friends, but it definitely does miss, I do miss the interaction and the parts of being on the board, but I definitely agree with what the rest of the board is, is talking about, about it is hard to have the public packed in, in the back, and, you know, I don't want to outright say, "Don't come," but I would strongly encourage the public to go on, on Zoom like the rest of the board is talking about, so. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Devin. So, first thing we need is a motion to extend the emergency declaration. Philip, you have a date you were thinking of, like February somewhere? Is that what you're thinking, or?
You could put it through the end of first quarter, something like that, or February, really, it's up to you all and what we can do.
But I think that would work perfect for first quarter.
Okay.
And I think the logic behind that is just what you mentioned. If there's any kind of, and the state's right now overwhelmed. If there's any kind of funding that's going to come out and we don't happen to have that declaration extended, or we fall under that umbrella that we could miss out on some funding, maybe this would be fallout, so. I mean, it just makes sense, so I would entertain a motion to extend that through the first quarter of 2022.
A move.
Thank you.
Second.
Second, Faye, further discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All opposed? Motion passes. Next, I believe, and I think everybody was pretty clear on that, we're okay with trustees and staff, critical staff, and then anybody that wants to attend by Zoom public-wise, let's go hybrid meetings. I think that makes sense.
So, still allow people to come in, maybe reduce the seating, and then try to get messaging out that during this time, we encourage people to utilize Zoom. Is that?
Would you even like to just cut off total in public?
I think we just ought to have a strictly go Zoom.
For public meeting, or for public attendance?
Public, yes.
Those chairs are awful close together for the people that sit there.
You know, what, what would we do? Put somebody at the door and say, "Hey, we got five."
That's the awkwardness of allowing it, but not, not allowing over a certain number, is then we need to actually deal with that.
I, it seems to me like, let's just take away the chairs, that, that's what I'm hearing and seeing, is take away the chairs, public can attend Zoom. I think that's, that's an easy way, and, and tonight was a perfect example. We had the scouts attend, and it's worked before. It's worked before. We can always adjust, keeping that in mind. If everything relaxes, we can bring them back in. Makes sense?
Yeah, when things get better, most definitely, and if someone has presentation like from one of the advisory boards, they would still be allowed to do a presentation, wouldn't they?
Through Zoom or in person?
Like here, and, yeah, in person.
For example, are we going to have some more presentations from advisory boards?
Not this year, no.
Okay.
All before budget, okay. I think, I guess that could be an option that maybe staff can look at if somebody has something they want to, let's say Becky wants to bring something in.
Sure.
If she wanted to particularly come in and, and address the board, you know, we'll leave that up to staff discretion. Otherwise, and she did that before in Zoom, no different.
So, I can work with that.
I think at this point, let's go hybrid. Board in the room, and then any attendance public-wise would be through Zoom.
Yeah.
Okay? Any other discussion on that, trustees? Thank you all very much. Next item is Town Treasurer, 2021 Third Quarter Financial Report.
Thank you, Mayor, trustees. I apologize. I just found out the hard way. You're not supposed to breathe water.
Oh, next item.
My report is on page 32 of the packet. Town has a policy that the treasurer will ring fourth quarter of my report, and so this is the report for, for the third quarter. It's a little later than, than I had been doing it, but this affords me the opportunity to include the full, the full quarters worth of sales tax revenue numbers, so. So off we go. Sales tax revenue generated through September of 2021 is year to date is roughly 2.2 million. This is about a half a million higher than the same period in 2020. Still a half a million. More than the 2021 budget. So the graph is on page thirty four. That's a visual representation of last five years of sales tax revenues. Then the next page is the balance sheet of all funds as of September thirtieth. So you can see that we have a pretty healthy cash balance in, well, the general fund kind of holds it, but it's it's about 4.1 million throughout all the funds. Then you can see in the investments under the waterfront, we have 3.6 million in in bonds. That's about it on the balance sheet. It balances. That's always good. The next page is on page thirty six is the 2021 fund balances through September. And what Libby pointed out to me when she was reviewing. This is that they don't tie to the balance sheet and the reason is because the report I pull out of Tyler has actual year to date from the day I pulled the report. So it's a this is a function of me going a little bit later for this report, a full month later. So that's why that happens and I will notate it better next next quarter. The next page is the fund balances per the budget through the end of the year. Yeah. So.
On a light note, she thanks me for looking at her reports.
I do. I appreciate it. I really do. Any comments that you have, I do really really appreciate it. So.
Thanks.
Anyways, you can see the fund balance as we projected through the end of the year, we project about 1.2 million in the general fund. There also is 2.1 million in the waterfront, which is our very healthiest fund. The next the next sheet on page thirty eight is basically a register of the activity and our bonds. And we had one bond in April that got re called. And then we bought another bond in September. The net change in market value, Gatsby requires that we book change in value, even though we haven't sold them, so sold any of the bonds. The market value is booked so that the market value is in the financials at any given time. But saying this last net change in market value, it went down by $15,000. The only way we would recognize that loss would be if we sold the bonds right here and now. You're always going to get your face value of your bonds back when they mature and whatever the interest is on the on the bond. So holding until they mature or called is the best bet and that's what we've been doing. So the net change of market value, it goes up and down with the rest of the economy. I also trustee Faye had mentioned quite a while back, probably when we first started this. Wanted to see the market price, the interest on page thirty nine. The value and the call, if it's callable, all the details of each of our bonds is here under underneath the portfolio holdings. Two of the bonds are here. And then the rest of them are on on the next page, on page forty. And you can see the the face value of the bonds is 3.675 million. And the market value is 3.8767 million. So we still are looking at an increase of value. So the next gazillion pages, starting on page forty one is the budget to actual report. And I include that even though I reckon you probably don't get it very much.
Hey. Michelle, can I make a comment about this one? Because it it trips me up every time I look at it. So maybe others do as well, but the it shows the budget and then compares what happened in the period and then overall fiscal activity. Just a reminder that the calculation is a year-to-date budget, not a full year number. Necessarily, it depends on like count, right? But so some of these are a portion. While some of some of them represent the full year. So just if you see percent remaining or favorable unfavorable, that looks way out of whack. That's the first place I I remember to look is that year-to-date budget is not a full year budget. Is that correct, Michelle?
Yeah, that is. And case in point is just easiest one to point out is the town sales tax. It's comparing it. Let's see, current budget, that is the adjusted budget of 2.2. And what we took in in the period ending nine thirty. And then the fiscal activity is year to date. And the three eighty nine shows how much over budget year to date we are. So it's not a full year budget. No. And that goes on and on and on and on. And that is the end of my report. I I am happy to take questions.
Questions or comments for Michelle? I do have a couple of comments. One, number one, the reason and Michelle kept saying late, it's not late. It's what we requested. So that she could capture that final sales tax number to plug in. That's why we pushed this back. So it's not late. It's perfect. Second, going to the bonds. Prior to Michelle, we had no bonds. Money set there. And did nothing. And it was Michelle that brought that forward to say, you know, we can do something with this. And so I mean, I think that's a major improvement compared to where we were when we started. Those are just my comments on the but treasurer's report. It's nice to see somebody willing to put that effort forward. I appreciate that. I do very much. Any other comments?
Good job.
Thank you all very much. Next is a purchase and sale agreement for property located at twenty eight, three sixty two County Road three seventeen. The board will consider approving the purchase and sale agreement. To purchase the property located at the same as mentioned above, property will be the site of the new police station.
We're here. Yay. Very exciting moment here for us, for staff. We've been working on this for a few months now. And we are now ready and prepared to present the purchase and sale agreement for the property located, yes, as you saw in the agenda. This is where Valley Home Furnishing currently exists. And an amazing opportunity that was presented to us about mid-year. And staff immediately kind of jumped on analysis of that building. So it hit a few highlights. That building is 10,600 square feet. And coming out of the 2020 facility assessment where we looked very closely at the police station needs, the programming needs is what it's called. That called out just shy, I think it was about 8,500 square feet. So this building provides more space than what our current programming needs demonstrate. It is in a great location. There's no perfect location. I won't say it's a perfect location, but our police department staff feel like this is an excellent location. Especially compared to where we were looking to build a new one, which was out by Public Works. No offense, Sean, but we still like the idea of having our police station visible, present in the community. Just not perhaps right on East Main Street. And so our PD feels like this gives them great access to east side of town, whereas if they were out by Public Works, that would be a little more challenging. We've talked extensively about this, but a lot of times our officers are on patrol, so they're actually responding, not from the station, but from where they're at on patrol. So great location. The building also presents a great opportunity for us. It's essentially kind of set up for what we're wanting to do. It even has a garage bay already for the Sallyport. So. But we did spend some resources doing some structural assessment of it to make sure that we don't jump into a remodel and have any aha surprises that cost us more than what we're planning to spend for the remodel. Yeah, great, great structure, well-built, excellent space. The the RJA or our architect is very, very excited about this. They think it's going to make for a fantastic space, both inside and out. Plenty of parking, paved. Yeah, I I could go on and on. I'm very excited about it. I think it's a a really, really good location. So, yeah, now that we have completed that structural assessment, which was really our part, you know, making sure that there were no surprises. We have drafted here in the packet a purchase and sale agreement with the current owner, Dave McNabb. That is agreeable to both staff and Mr. McNabb. We with this, the purchase price is 1.1 million. And we would look to close on January thirty first, 2022. There is a provision to extend that up to 60 days if there is a need from from the seller's side. I don't anticipate that, but there is that option there that would not impact our project schedule. We would be proceeding with with all the work we're doing on the architecture and design of the remodel. So I'm sure I'm forgetting something, but I'll pause there. Are there any questions?
Trustees? Go ahead, Libby.
Yeah, have you received any kind of cost estimates yet for the remodel of it to get it fully functional?
Yes, we have. So with the purchase of 1.1, we would be looking at a construction cost of two and a half million on top of that. We would be looking at another 300,000 that covers the architecture design, all the fees associated with building. Engineering, all that stuff, construction manager, and then up to 500,000 for equipment and and furnishings for the building. Those are the the latest numbers that RJ has produced, looking at projected inflated numbers for 2022, late 2022. So that brings it to about four and a half million roughly total project cost. We were looking to purchase the building using our unrestricted fund balance out of general fund. That 1.1 1.1 million, we will be going for a $600,000 DOLA grant in the spring of twenty two. We've we've gone over this project with DOLA and they feel like it's a very strong candidate for their their grant program. And then we would be utilizing the COP process to fund the remaining balance, which would be which would be about two and a half million, assuming that we do get the DOLA grant, but as you may, we'll talk about it during the budget public hearing, but Michelle and I are actually proposing that we go for and qualify for about three to 3.1 million in the COP, just to make sure we have enough. Depending on the outcome of the grant application. So that's, does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you.
Dave?
The COP is this certificate of participation?
Correct.
Yeah. Forgive me, I I I'm trying to recall the sequence of conversations, but I think that prior to this opportunity becoming a a reality, we were putting in a test figure in the budget of about a quarter of a million dollars to fund the police department?
To pay for the COP.
Okay.
Correct. And we actually increased that in the budget. We'll talk about, we'll mention that too and outline that. We've increased it a little bit in ClearGov. We we met with our COP team on Friday and we we had based it on two and a half million dollars. And we're going to propose that we go ahead and qualify for the 3 million. And that increases that payment a bit, but the but the assumptions there are 15 years, 2.75%. And so that's that's the number that's currently loaded in our budget. It also shows that we have the operating funds to cover that on an annual basis.
Good, Dave?
Yeah, thank you.
Devin, do you have anything?
You know, it's a lot of money. You know, I realize it's something that we need. You know, I would, I'm excited to see what other opportunities and what other support this space could be used in the future for public safety here in town. So I think it sounds good.
Okay, thank you, Devin. Anybody else?
With the 2.5 million and then you said an additional 500,000. So what 500,000 is for just furnishings?
Equipment furnishings. So all of the all of the components that have to go inside, not, you know, furniture is the easy one, but you start thinking about storage, evidence, storage, things like that.
Gotcha. I would assume some of those like, I've seen a lot of desks and chairs and stuff, but some of that would have been included within the 2.5. Going because with the design and such, you know, I would assume they could maybe design in there to cut some of that cost, but I'm no architect, but like just maybe some trim that down if possible, but just curious, you know, I don't know what all goes into those numbers. So that's why I'm asking.
Yep. And unfortunately, a lot of what we're talking about there is not over here. They don't have the safe storage for evidence storage and stuff like just the room for it. There just isn't
Right.
Capacity isn't there, so it isn't likely to move it from here to there. It just doesn't exist in that aspect.
We're pretty thrifty. I mean, yeah, I I I think if there's that opportunity to save, we will, but we also want to do it right. And the main thing is the building itself. Furniture and things like that can be changed over time. We want to make sure the building's done right. So, yeah, we, these are, we want to go for numbers that perhaps are a little higher so that we make sure the funding stack all adds up and we're not scrambling at the end. So, point taken. Thank you.
And especially when we're looking that far out. You know, estimating what are prices going to do in a year, two years? You never know.
And the interest rates.
Yes, exactly. Yeah, that I mean, that 275 isn't screamer anymore. You know, 1% would be great. Never mind. So we need a motion to To direct staff. Uh, to, to enact this purchase-sale agreement. And that would be directing the administrator to sign the agreement.
Yes, this agreement. Was either written or reviewed by Jeff.
Absolutely. Jeff, you wanna?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I couldn't get my mute button to turn off there. Yeah, no, I, I definitely um. Worked on it and reviewed it. Uh, it was originally prepared by the um, seller's attorney. And I worked through it with him and with Philip and um. Uh, we got this to the point that it's in right now and it, it look, it looks fine to me from a legal perspective. The issues are whether the terms work for you and it sounds like they probably will.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thanks for asking.
Thank you, Cindy. Thank you, Jeff. Questions, comments or a motion?
I'll make the move or deny. To approve. The purchase and sale agreement of the property. That's. Twenty-eight, three sixty-two County Road three seventeen.
Thank you.
Second.
Second Swisher. Further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee McCrutzy.
Yes.
Trustee Hackett.
Yes.
Trustee Rowe.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Trustee Butler.
Yes. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. And, and just to note, we have this budgeted in twenty twenty-two, so no need to amend the twenty twenty-one budget.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a public hearing. Now, this is public hearing for the twenty twenty-two Town of Buena Vista budget. Uh, we will hear from staff first. Michelle?
Thank you, Mayor. Trustees, the memo um, for this presentation is on page ninety-five of the packet. Um. Typically, when we're this far along, I just. Cover the changes and those were, we increased the sales tax lines. To include September sales tax revenues. Um. We increased the employee end-of-year gift line by six hundred dollars. To three thousand dollars total. Um. We spent um. Twenty-three hundred dollars on. On uh, gift cards for employees this year. And the budget was twenty-four and with the staffing. Increases that we were planning to do. Um, we felt it was a good idea to increase it. Um, cause it's not only the gift cards, it's the Christmas cards and, and um. Yeah, that, I think that covers it. Small increase in the direct primary care costs, that's. A health insurance benefit that they, that a few employees have. Um, we were notified of that increase. Um, increase in re, in support for the recycling program to fifteen thousand nine fifty. I believe we chatted about that last meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so that is officially there and a placeholder added for a school internship. Uh, of eighty-five hundred dollars. We have the opportunity for the high school to um. For them to have interns work with different departments in town and. The obvious departments are airport or um. Parks.
Planning.
Planning.
Finance.
I had to throw my hat in the ring too, so finance would like to have. An intern if that's um. If there's one that's interested in that. And then the other, there was one thing we discussed, Philip. That's not in the memo, because we talked about it on Friday.
COP, is that what you're referring to?
Yeah.
Okay.
We changed the payment for uh, police department lease payments. To include a full year of uh, the lease payments at. The uh, hospital property, the bank. Over here that the police department is currently in and. We budgeted for a full year of COP payments, even though. That deal won't close till sometime during the year. Um, we felt it was best to put. To be a little conservative as far as. Put more in and would probably actually spend just to show that we. Are going to be able to service these lease contracts. So. That is, uh, those are the changes. Uh, we'll be bringing forth the updated mill levy in the final budget and um. That will be uh, when we vote on the budget in December. I'll, I'll put that in at the last minute because I don't get the numbers from the county until late, so. That'll be updated.
Questions for staff? Trustees?
But I have a question. When you get that mill levy number, you use that for the revenue as for property tax?
Yes.
And then also for the fire? When you use it for that, that same number?
Yeah.
Now, the fire is a different.
Different calculation.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, they've, they've done that analysis. Um, and that's what's loaded in there, but it's, it's that. It, it could probably add up to the same. calculation or whatnot, but we back out properties that are already in the dual protection. Already paying into that mill levy for a fire, shaking fire. So. It's a separate, separate calculation.
Any other questions? Okay, I'll open up this public hearing to public comment. If there's anyone in the public who would like to make a comment, if you're on Zoom, please raise your hand. Uh, if you're on your telephone, please press star nine and we will recognize. You and allow you to speak.
I am not seeing anything in chat or any raised hands at this time.
New, so I, this portion of public comment in the public hearing. Uh, any other clarifying questions for staff at this time? Hearing none, I would take a motion to. What's our date?
December fourteenth.
The fourteenth, December. I would have, entertain a motion to continue this hearing until December fourteenth. So my. Thank you.
Second.
Grezzi, second. Further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you, Devin. Opposed? Hearing none, we will continue this and hear more. Next meeting and I encourage you all to go to ClearGov. It's a wealth of information there, especially when you're trying to weed through all of this. It's entertaining.
Yeah, a, a, any questions that do come up? If you. You can either call me or you can put your questions in the conversation bubble. And either Philip, well, both Philip and I get emails that say, you know. Trustee Fay.
Not their comment.
Specifically.
That would be whatever, trustee.
Uh-huh.
Uh, it's an opportunity, let's put it that way. It's an easy opportunity. Next item on the agenda is the twenty twenty-two holiday schedule. Board consider adding. Two holidays, Juneteenth and Cabrini to the twenty twenty-two holiday schedule. Philip, would you like to?
Sure, so uh, simply memo from your administrator explaining uh, an opportunity here. Uh, to consider adding to. Our paid holiday list. This would be. Something to consider for twenty twenty-two. We also have this defined in our handbook, which we would. If the board wants to make any changes, one way or another, it also needs to amend the handbook, so just. To clarify, that's how we keep track of this from year to year. Uh, I think the last time we adjusted this was in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen timeframe, if I remember correctly. And uh, so I've, I've kind of explained the two holidays. First is Cabrini Day. Um. Which is a, which is a new Colorado state holiday. It's actually the first paid state holiday honoring a woman. Um, I included a link here that kind of gives some background um, on Cabrini, but pretty, pretty impressive. Uh, what she accomplished in her life, uh, started sixty-seven schools and hospitals. And orphanages. Uh, she founded the first orphanage in Denver. And um, anyway, so that was, that was created as a new Colorado state holiday and. And I think uh, for good reason. And then uh, Juneteenth, which you may have heard coming from Texas, I apologize for that, I can't help it, but. Uh, Juneteenth was a state holiday uh, for a long time there. Um. Uh, but it actually became a federal holiday uh, this year, in fact. Um, so it's, it's actually a new federal holiday. Um, this is something I was made aware uh, of from the county and from um, a couple of other municipalities that were looking to. Add these into their holiday schedule. And um, yeah, I personally felt like they uh, make a lot of sense and. Uh, but it is a board consideration and discussion. And entirely your decision, not mine. So I will turn it over or answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
I do have a couple of questions.
Sure.
And they're minor. Um. June twentieth, do we have any special events? Around June twentieth that would interfere with um. Being able to have most of the crew take the time off on that day?
Good question. We typically do not have something specific on a Monday. But I did not look at our special, I guess. I don't think we have any approved special events yet, but um. We could, we could double check that.
Okay.
Um, of what we're aware of at this point. Uh, typically, uh, so that you all know, uh. Obviously, we have staff that work on holidays, especially our police department. Our water department also has to be on call twenty-four seven. Uh, and we do compensate for staff that, that are required to work on holidays uh, at time and a half, so. Um. If, if we did have a situation in, on any of the holidays where. There's that requirement to, to work, there is that component to it.
Okay. My other question is to put it into perspective. So it's mainly two days. What is roughly two days of payroll for the town?
One day, uh, rough number is about eleven thousand dollars. Is, yeah, eleven thousand dollars for one paid. Uh. Holiday or one paid day. Am I saying that right? Now, this isn't adding to the budget, right? This is essentially um.
No, it is.
Paying for a day uh, of, of off, so non-work, but it's not a net add to the budget.
I think that's a cheap price for morale.
Thank you, Cindy. Devin, do you have anything?
I think it's totally great to have these days, so I have nothing else to add.
Thank you. Anybody else, any?
We got a couple of comments. One is um, we probably were not recognizing Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day as a holiday previously.
We have not. I think that was swapped out back in twenty thirteen, twenty fourteen, and if I'm not mistaken, I think it was given. Given up for uh, Christmas Eve.
Okay.
Say.
It was the day after Thanksgiving.
One of those two.
One of those two. It, it was, it was given uh, um. The employees were given the out, the choice. Um, would you like to keep that day or would you rather have the?
Hmm.
The Christmas Eve or day after Thanksgiving as a, a paid. Paid day, and so that was the option that was given.
Yeah, I think this is good. I, I totally approve of, of uh, Juneteenth. Uh, being a holiday and, you know, recognizing that and then um. You know, Cabrini Day, I, I wasn't really aware of the significance of Mother Cabrini, but. I rode my bike to her shrine once and it was a big effort to get up there.
So now you respect it even more, right?
Yeah, but I also would like to say that um. Adding two holidays for the employees is a nice benefit for them. And they still have just as much work to get done, so the work just has to get spread among the other days. Um, so it doesn't cost us a lot except for the overtime. Um, but.
If that happens.
But hopefully we pick up employee morale.
Any other comments?
Survived quite well, anyway.
Okay, and I do appreciate that comment, Cindy, the, what it does for the employees is probably immeasurable. It's really hard to put a, a number on that. I would entertain a motion. To approve those two holidays being added to the holiday schedule.
I move.
Thank you. Nyberg?
Second.
Prezzi? Further discussion? Roll call?
Trustee Fay.
Yes.
Trustee McCrutzy.
Yes.
Trustee Nyberg.
Yes.
Trustee Rowe.
Yes.
Trustee Swisher.
Yes.
Mr. Butler.
Yes.
Thank you, Philip, for bringing that forward. Thank you all. You know, just because you're from Texas, we'll let it slide.
Appreciate that too.
Next item on the agenda is adoption of resolution number forty-eight, twenty twenty-one, a resolution of the Board of Trustees for the Town of Buena Vista. Colorado approving the First Amendment to the Public Improvement Agreement with Fading West Homes LLC for the property known as Lot C dash thirteen Colorado Center PUD. amended final plat, filing one, amendment one, Buena Vista, Colorado.
Outfall, right?
Hey, it's low, though. I think, I didn't understand it, but maybe somebody did.
So very exciting news is that the factory is, is in a position where they can open up safely and begin work and. Lot of people lined up to work there and, yeah, very, I think a very exciting addition to the town. Uh, the huh, part of it is that they have not completed the public improvement improvements as outlined in the PIA that was approved earlier this year. Uh, we were aware of that. We've been kind of in lockstep with them for a number of months, knowing that they were trying to target this time to open up. Um, a lot of housing orders uh, that they've got to be going on. So what we did is we looked at um. Uh, there's, so there's two things to consider in this resolution. One is extending that deadline out because they have passed that deadline. So to bring that, them back into compliance. Um, short of it all just getting done overnight, uh, it's extending that deadline into twenty twenty-two, so you'll see that. Uh, June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two is the new deadline. Uh, the second aspect is the wording in the PIA, the original PIA said. Was a, basically you shall complete all public improvements agreement prior to issuance of a CO, certificate of occupancy. Um, in a, in a, in an effort to uh, work with them and knowing what this means to our community. To get them uh, a CO, staff looked at it from a public safety uh, standpoint and they, and it's been determined that. The building meets all of the building codes. Uh, they can operate the, the factory and their, in their site safely without having any negative impacts. Uh, to not only their employees, but to the surrounding public. Uh, unfinished public improvements. Uh, so we are proposing that we amend that as well and we proceed with issuance of a CO. If the board approves this First Amendment to the PIA. So that, uh, and you'll, you'll see that reference in the resolution. It talks about, it's the First Amendment. But it talks about requested, they've requested two amendments, so it's that deadline and the issuance of the CO. Okay, so Sean's on. If you've got any questions, uh, he's been. And with them quite a bit on their uh, public improvements, primarily drainage, things like that. Um, if you, if you have any specific questions about that, but uh, Joseph, our planning team and Sean and his team have been. Very focused on how we handle this situation, so. That is staff's recommendation and I'll take any questions.
Trustees? Go ahead, Louis.
We're holding their cash.
We absolutely are.
And that's like a hundred and fifteen percent of. What we expect the improvements to cost. And that's like a hundred and fifteen percent of what we expect the improvements to cost.
Correct, it roughly one hundred and forty thousand dollars.
Good.
Devin, do you have anything?
No, I think it, it's pretty straightforward.
Thank you, anybody else?
I was just kind of curious about what it was that was holding it up, and I know it, I understand says. Not fully understood by town staff exactly, cause, but, I mean, it was COVID related, like, I mean. There has to be some version of a reason of why shifted and I was just curious as to what. It's in something more than just, you know.
Didn't get it done. Yeah, uh, it's a good question, I. I think um, the timing on some of, I mean, some of it is planting material, um, things like that. Uh, yeah, I don't really necessarily, I don't necessarily want to put words in there for them, um, other than they, they focused on getting the building. And their site ready and they ran out of time on, on some of these public improvements. Sean, do you have any? Any specifics that you're aware of that might be relevant to that question?
Yeah, I, I agree with you, I don't, I don't really want to speak for them, but I, I do know that um, the um. Ability for, from a manufacturing standpoint did have a lot to do and it did impact um, their scheduling. So I know that was a big part of it.
A question for Sean, um, so we have extended to. June thirtieth of twenty twenty two, correct, is what we're looking at. So the stuff that they need to plant and do, does whatever they need to do, does it? Weather permitting, tree planting, does it fall into the? Guidelines, the good time to plant?
Yeah, even.
That's far enough out.
Yeah, yeah, I think even more so, the, you know, this time of year, it's, you know. Probably puts the installers in a vulnerable position for warranty work for plant material. Being planted this late in the year, for sure, so I would imagine the. Uh, landscaping and planting efforts probably start back up, you know, during the beginning of our season, which is, you know, somewhere between mid-April. Late April, early May.
So there wouldn't be planting wise, there wouldn't be a good reason to ever extend that June thirtieth deadline, okay?
Uh, we should be able to get it done by June thirtieth.
Feel pretty, pretty comfortable with that deadline. Any other questions? And I think we've had that discussion before about planning this time of year anyway, it's been brought up about how it's. Uh, what they have to guarantee two years, something, 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 and it's always been an issue, always been an issue, so. Um, I would entertain a motion if they're. Uh, motion with amendments, motion to approve, deny?
I'll make a motion to approve uh, resolution number forty eight as written.
Second Nyberg? Further discussion? Roll call.
Yes.
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 Rusty Swisher.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you all and we'll hope this doesn't lead us down a road, we've been down before with other people. But it won't pass, think positive folks, think positive, it will not, it will not, trusty staff interaction, Paula.
Happy Thanksgiving, enjoy the holidays.
Thank you very much Devin, with a mouthful of water.
Just trying to take a drink of water before I had to talk. Yeah, um, the only thing that I have is something that's been kind of on my mind a lot, um. Is about the police station, I know it's something that town we need, I know the, the other police station is small. I just um, would like to think about in the future about ways we can serve the public more, um, perhaps with this. Brand new awesome facility, um, whether it's reaching out to uh, Soul Vista and seeing if there's any way we can support. Uh, the public in that way, but I'd like to see a way to better serve our community. Um, you know, I just see it as a big, huge. Uh, building that's gonna cost a lot of money and we already give a lot of money to the police and they're great. And I really support that, but I want to see. Maybe some other ways or ideas that we can support the community even more, so. I'm excited to see what that could be in the future with this new building, so that's all I got right now.
Thank you Devin, and I think uh, maybe there are possibilities with the meeting rooms that are there that uh, something can evolve, that would be great. Uh, Norm, um, uh, Libby?
I have nothing.
Lucrezi? Swisher?
Happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you very much, Dave Popey.
Have to circle back to something that happened during the administrator's report that I didn't think about until later on, the Sangre de Cristo uh, franchise agreement. There was a bullet point that caught my attention, trying to zip back to page eighteen. Disruptive technology, the ability to pursue and collaborate as new technology changes the electric industry. I, I don't know how to, I don't know how to forecast that, but i- is it, will there be a discussion amongst the? With the board as far as advising what that means, or I guess the, I've got a question, just be what input? Is needed or will there be from the board as we move through that process?
Great question, so in discussions with uh, Paul Erickson um. And Sarah from his team. We were talking about, you know, some, some electric franchise agreements talk about very specific things like solar. We want, or renewables, we want wind or, you know, that kind of thing, right? But the thought is over a twenty five year period, we have no idea what is coming. That will be present in an opportunity between, for our local community, and so. That's where it kind of went up to something that was a little more general, talking about, well, there's going to be disruptive technologies. And how do we write in here the opportunity for town leadership? You know, songray leadership to talk about, you know, what could we do with that when it comes up? So that's where that terminology came from. Uh, I absolutely do need input from the board when it comes to what you all want to see in this agreement. That maybe drives. Um, certain deliverables around this topic. Um, you can look at Boulder's franchise agreement with their electric provider as an example of. You know, they want to be a hundred percent on renewable energy by twenty thirty, like they put very specific goals. In that agreement. Not really surprising to me knowing how that area operates and how they prioritize things, not good or bad, just that, that speaks to them. If you look at some of the other ones, they don't, they don't mention it at all, or they mention it a little bit, so. It is, it, it's a hard one and I'd be happy to have set aside discussion with you all if you, if you have. Input and want to try to shape that so that it stands the test of time. Um, and maybe captures some specifics, if that's desired.
That one, I mean, it, it's a little bit of philosophy. And we do, absolutely don't know what we're looking at, I mean, everybody has theories of what's coming, but man, it's gonna be. And then it, it's gonna be radically different than anything we can imagine at this point, so.
I mean, seriously, twenty five years.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the next ten are gonna be crazy, so.
Yeah.
Doesn't even seem prudent to have a twenty five year agreement.
So to that point, trustee Swisher, one concept that we talked about was maybe having a five year review cycle. Where there's that opportunity to open it back up and, and look at where we're at. If things need to change, if there's new technology, what, what have you, instead of. Yeah, we gotta wait twenty one more years before we.
Yeah, let's write this out. Just write it out.
So that, that's something that we kind of liked the sound of to write in there.
That'd be a good idea. Very good idea with the way things are changing so fast.
Yeah, dramatically, that's a very good, very good catch, Dave, pretty good catch. Anything else? Michelle?
Um, with the dissolution of our fire department, the disposition of uh, equipment. Has left behind uh, those S C B As, which is the SCUBA breather apparatus. Those were acquired. Um, through a FEMA grant, and so language in the grant contract says that we have to. Coordinate with them in order to dispose of the S C B A units. Um, I have been in contact with, cause they audited this grant also. So I would have been in contact with FEMA and heard back today that they. Uh, recommended that we reach out to the town of Hartsell and offer them our S C B As.
Interesting. I, yeah, because they have the lakes in their district. Makes sense, otherwise I was gonna say, just tell them, you'll send them back to them. And they'll say, nah, keep them.
Well, we were, and see, we were thinking about that they should go with the rest of the equipment to the county, county doesn't want them, they have different. Um, different equipment with different interfaces, different charging.
So what do we need to do to reach out?
We can.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
Thank you very much, do you have anything else?
That's it for me.
Perfect, uh, Jack, you still with us?
I think I told him to drop.
All right, Jack's gone.
Back up.
Yes.
Again, so if we did. Somebody else acquires them, then they have to deal with FEMA from then on?
I would imagine, um.
No longer our burden, I mean, that's.
We will make sure.
That's common sense, but hey, we're talking, you never mind.
Talking government.
I wasn't gonna say it, I was gonna say FEMA, I wasn't gonna go that deep. Sean?
Yeah, a couple of things, well, one, uh, thank you um, um, to Upper Ark for uh, making. Time for the town of Buena Vista, um, Gracie Goodwood spent some time with staff and we reviewed. Um, some of the application processes for that uh, C W C B grant. She is very helpful, so I appreciate her time on that. Um, and um, yeah, hang in there on uh, Christmas, uh, we have a few light poles that we're trying to get replaced on Main Street, so hopefully we have that wrapped up. And uh, we can get the garland and the bows on. Yeah, and, and happy, happy Thanksgiving, everyone, uh, appreciate you all, thank you.
Thank you Sean and you too, uh, Jeff, do you have anything?
No, I don't, um, just uh, happy Thanksgiving and it's been a pleasure being your attorney for, I think it's been uh, over ten years now. So um, enjoy the holidays.
That's scary, you know what, cause I knew the guy before you.
Yeah, yeah, you've been here for a while too, Doug, luckily neither of us like any older than we did ten years ago, so.
Oh, we're just on cruise right now.
Yeah.
Thanks Jeff.
Uh, happy Thanksgiving, everybody, great stuff, uh, a few things real quick. Uh, Sean mentioned it, but I want to make sure uh, board understands clearly, C W C B, that grant opportunity he mentioned. That has a due date of December first, if I'm not mistaken, Sean, something like that, yes. Uh, want to make sure the board's comfortable with us pursuing that grant opportunity. It would be specifically for the infiltration gallery expansion, which between the water board, staff, I think the board even expressed it. No matter what we do, we feel like the infiltration gallery expansion is a part of this whole project, so. Um, saying that, not, so we'll proceed with that grant.
Do you want a motion?
Um, sure, wouldn't hurt.
Real quick, motion to proceed with that grant?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second. Didn't hear anybody. I saw fingers, I saw not Lucrezi, did you say second?
I did, but it's.
Good, second, we have a second. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you all, um, next, uh, appreciate the comments from trustee Row about the, the uh, police station and. Uh, functionalities that, that uh, we could look at coming out of that facility. Um, our P D would like to come to the board meeting on January eleventh. To actually present um, some updates, some topics around mental health and what their, what the team is doing around that, so. I didn't just make that up because of trustee Rose's comments, but Bean and Amber really wanted to be here in December, but. I said, let's, let's start fresh in January, so uh, Amber Lee and Chief Morgan will be here for that. Uh, and uh, last thing I have is community grant review. We're getting to that point and I'm getting set up with the new director for Chaffey Community Foundation. Uh, uh, Betsy and I apologize, I'm blanking on her last name, but you probably saw the announcement, she's, she's awesome. I think she's gonna pick up where Joseph left off with that organization and do good, good work for the county and for us in our grant process. Uh, part of that is we've had a trustee participate in the review of those grant applications. And I think that's been a good opportunity to have a voice from the town board in that process, so. Wanted to put that out there, not to put anyone on the spot, but if there's any interest, um, definitely want to loop you in on that, so.
When do they start?
Uh, and will probably the reviews, I think, start in late January, February, if I'm not mistaken, trustee Fay.
That sounds about right, sounds like it's February, March type. Too.
So.
And it could be more than one person, too.
It could, it could be two.
Doesn't have to be, now if there were more than that, though, it'd have to be posted as a meeting, da-da-da-da.
Every time.
But if there were two.
Yeah, so there could be two, but yeah, that'd be perfect, so we have a little bit of time to think about it, if anybody, you know, sparks an interest.
It's an interesting process.
When do they?
We put in a certain amount of, I mean, a certain percentage of our sales tax, Salida was putting in an equal amount of money. But I think that Salida may have increased their, theirs to the same percentage.
I think you all, as the board issued a little challenge there.
It seemed to me like they stepped up.
Yeah.
If I remember correctly, when do they meet normally?
Well, it was all over Sam.
Well, it was.
Yeah.
Obviously, last year, yeah, it would have been. Uh, you know, that makes it, uh, I hate to say it, but that makes it easier to accommodate schedules. When you can do that, so um, keep it in thoughts and we'll. Step up, I've got a couple more.
Keep prompting you all as we get closer.
Okay, perfect, that's all I have, thank you.
What do you have?
Um, I only have a short comment and I'm gonna be as nice as I possibly can, there was a email sent to. Uh, us, I'll put it that way, there's only three words in there that really mean anything to me and wow, and uh, a former trustee and a mayor. Um. Obviously came from a person who has no concept of what Cindy, myself, Norm, you experienced. Of not being able to keep help, find help. And take care of help. And when we can accommodate with. Menial things, and I call it that of patting them on the back with days off, things like that. That means a lot and that goes a long ways to keep an employees in today's environment. This is an environment, if you're not a businessman right now, you know nothing about, nothing about. Because you cannot find and get employees, how many are we short?
A handful, we're short a few.
And try to keep them, but if this is a dangle of something in front of the fish to get them to bite, hey. Um, this is what people look for, they want, and why do I want to work for you? And that's why I want to work for you, is the benefits. And that's really what it comes down to, and if you don't offer, they will go somewhere else, or in this circumstance, and I hate to say it, our environment today is, they won't work. They just plain don't want to work, so if you don't offer something they want, you can't get it, that's more or less all I've got to say about that email.
Thank you.
And, and it's public record, correct Paula, that email, so if anybody wants it, it's there. Otherwise, have a very good Thanksgiving, folks. It's, I think, uh, I think it's one everybody's been looking forward to, it's been a while and, and actually, nobody's telling us we can't get together. Thank you all very much, Ted, entertain a motion. Have a motion to adjourn by Volpe.
Second.
Second Fay, further discussion. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Take care, Devon. We'll see y'all.
Take care. Happy Thanksgiving, all.
Happy Thanksgiving, Devon.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Good meeting, folks.